It's my second time doing that. Welcome, everybody, to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, November 4th. Welcome. What a fun meeting I get to chair with the tiniest little agenda package, which was an extra welcome addition because I was away on holiday. So, pretty much, this is the best thing that's existed in the last year. I want us to have a whole book to be to talk about them. Good work thing. So, I'll just get us started. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Seeing none. I'll look for someone to move the approval of minutes from the October 17th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Councillor Freeman, seconded by Councillor Bodley, all in favor. That's everyone. And now, we'll just jump right in. Okay, delegation. So, we have Age Friendly Waterloo Multi-Agency Committee represented by Jenny Flagler-George, who's the Chair of the Committee, accompanied by Dr. John Lewis.
This year, our focus is really on building an inclusive community, and that reflects what we hear on an annual basis from our Age Friendly Waterloo Mayor's Forum, where we really look to engage with residents who attend the forum to see where their priorities lie and what areas of focus they would like to see as we move forward to build an age-friendly Waterloo. And this is something that has come out for the last number of years, loud and clear as a priority, which I'm sure you'll also see reflected in the City of Waterloo's new strategic plan with the key pillar of equity inclusion and a sense of belonging, which not only is reflective of what our committee has been able to contribute, but also other residents of Waterloo as well. Going back a few years, we've heard over and over again that more work needs to happen around Age Friendly Waterloo, and this is something that we know will never be finished. So, it reflects a lot of work that has been done and also that continued focus to really focus on respective and social inclusion, bringing an older adult lens to community planning initiatives, which you can see embedded in all of the work that the City of Waterloo does, as well as the social, physical, and health programs for older adults, as well as folks of all ages, providing more intergenerational learning opportunities, which is something that has come out again from that forum feedback that we've heard, and establishing volunteer opportunities for youth and older adults. I'm going to throw it over to John, who's going to talk a little bit more about the trends specifically in the City of Waterloo with not only our growing older adult population, but also an increasingly diverse community.
So, a lot of the data and the initiatives that we're presenting tonight, you know, as part of being able to demonstrate to the World Health Organization, of which we're a member of their Age Friendly Network, Global Network, that Waterloo is actually making some strides to address questions surrounding age friendliness. So, demographically, I mean, as a community, we are aging, and we know that, you know, in the next 10 years, that about a third of our population will be 55 years of age or older. And when we look at as well at some other characteristics of Waterloo, the City of Waterloo's demographic, we are attracting people from all corners of the world, you know, to come to our city to take advantage of, you know, really world-class education and training, as well as employment. So, again, statistically, when we look at the way the figures are basically emerging over the next 10 years, we can see that the fraction of the form-born population within the Waterloo is beginning to change and is growing, actually, quite considerably. So, we've got opportunities here, and we want to couch what we're presenting to you tonight in those terms, not in alarmist terms that Waterloo is aging and, oh, my gosh, that's a problem. There is an actual tremendous opportunity at play here.
So, we know that with that opportunity comes a focus on making sure that all older adults, as well as folks of all ages, feel a strong sense of belonging. So, not only can we benefit from that intergenerational and intercultural learning that can really foster an overall stronger sense of belonging and social inclusion, but we know that there's opportunities where we need to have more focus on things like responding to that demand for intergenerational learning opportunities and not forgetting older adults who may be at risk of social isolation, which also does often include those who are newcomers. Before I throw it back to John to talk a little bit more about the Age Friendly Waterloo Committee and our intersection with the City of Waterloo Strategic Plan, I again want to emphasize that the City of Waterloo staff, Jim is on our committee and a strong advocate for the committee, works very closely with the initiatives of Age Friendly Waterloo Committee. And you can really see that age-friendly lens for many of the city's programs running through those health, social, and physical programs for older adults. So, what John is going to be showing is some of the examples of the initiatives that have been led by the Age Friendly City Committee, but not necessarily the full gamut, just sampling.
So, you can see that we load really heavily under equity, inclusion, and belonging. And so, we've been pretty busy under this new strategic plan pillar. And so, what's been keeping us busy is writing federal government grants, you know, to essentially attract some money into the city to basically say, "Look, we've got these really great ideas," again, about how we can mobilize the wisdom of generations that exist within the community. So, we have older adults who have a lot of experience, and we have older adults from all corners of the world who can basically bring knowledge and experience to play, to intergenerationally teach young adults, as well as youth, you know. How you do various things, such as in the case of some of the projects that we funded through the Bridges Program, how to do South Asian cooking, or we've got Indigenous art classes, we had African drumming sessions. The premise for these programs is to basically bring youth and older adults together in sort of an informal learning environment where older adults become elders, you know. And so, we're reframing, you know, how we look at senior pop or members of our population, and they're interacting with younger demographics and exchanging knowledge, ideas, and experience. And then, of course, we were very busy gathering support to develop the Aging Well Waterloo Directory, which our citizens basically said, you know, "We know," sort of anecdotally, "that there's services and programs available for us out there. Can you provide the information to us in a multiple format, channel?" So, one, on the one hand, citizens are saying, "Can you make it paper-based?" On the other hand, they're also saying, you know, "Can you provide digital channels and ways of conveying the information?" Now, the video is not working great. So, what you see here is the paper-based directory, and then we also have an online version of the directory where, when residents go online, they can access the same services that are available through the paper catalog in a web-based format. And then, of course, members of our committee, and I'm going to point to Rick Chambers, you know, was very instrumental in working with our counterparts in the cities of Kitchener and Cambridge to train and teach really older adults on how to use the ION system, as well as the other facilities that are provided by Grand River Transit, again, to get them out, to get them into the community, get them integrated, and feel like they're actually part of the fabric of the city. So, what are we doing in the next year? Well, we're going to obviously build on our successes, and what we've learned that, you know, in order to be a sustainable enterprise, as far as a committee is concerned, we need more than government grants. Those don't see us in the long term or see us through some of our long-term ambitions. We have, on the other hand, developed some really strong and effective community partners through which we hope to develop and gain that kind of momentum, you know, to keep our programs and our ideas flowing into the future. Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much for that presentation. I just wanted to ask if there's any questions from council to the delegations?
Yeah, Councillor Beeth.
Through you, Chair Vasik. No questions. I just want to thank you all for coming this evening. And I know, John and Jenny, that there are some of your committee members present. Could they, could you ask them to stand, or could I ask them to stand? See, that's amazing. Thank you all for coming tonight. I was at the event on Friday, the Mayor's Forum, very well attended, and really a great agenda for the day, for the morning. It was a half a day. And I want to commend the committee and the volunteers for all the work that you did to put that together. John Newfeld, you know, did a great presentation about belonging, and so, a great choice to have on your, on your agenda. And the other cool thing for me was to see, it was so, it was so intergenerational, the young, the youth from Blueville that were there, and they talked about social media and, and different kinds of social media. So, it was really quite interesting, and how they participated in the round tables at the end. So, yeah, thank you for coming and for all you do, and just keep it up. It's great. We're looking forward to next year's event.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks so much. Before I invite the next delegation up, I realize there's two things that I forgot. I know, I'm still a little nervous up here. Okay, when is the land acknowledgement? I know. In any case, we can say it now. I missed the first time it was ever said last week, but I watched it, which was very exciting. So, we'd like to begin, or almost begin, by acknowledging that the land on which we gather today is land traditionally used by the Haudenosaunee and Ichnabe and Nootro people. We also acknowledge the enduring presence and deep traditional knowledge and philosophies of the Indigenous people with whom we share this land today. And the second piece I forgot to say, just to make sure that everyone stays, and you don't just leave right after your presentation, which you definitely can if you have to, no pressure to stay, but there is a little reception afterwards. So, we welcome everyone to stand, and we'd love to have an opportunity to more informally get to know you a little bit better. Okay, with that, I'd like to bring James Craig up, who's the Chair of the Town and Gown Committee. Welcome.
Great, thank you very much, Chair Vasik. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you today. I'm actually quite proud to be standing in front of you. This is my third year as part of this committee, and I must say that it's certainly well-regarded throughout Ontario and probably throughout Canada as being a leader, and it's great to be standing in front of you to speak to our accomplishments and to our successes, as well as to where we're heading as well. So, we have a, basically, our composition, you know, basically, we have a steering committee. We sort of drive our committee through that, meeting most of the time throughout, throughout a year, five to six times roughly, and then our larger multi-agency group, which meets about three times per year. So, basically, our mandate is to develop and enhance the relationships and communications and policies with universities, colleges, you know, students, city, police, and community. So, in a nutshell, basically, with a glue that sort of holds it all together at the end of the day. In 2011, there was a strategic review, which sort of renewed the mission and mandate of the committee, and it provided a stronger governance structure in which we could sort of move forward. More recently, there is obviously the, in July, I believe it was, of 2019, the new Waterloo Strategic Plan was announced, and it was surprising to see that many of the initiatives that we were driving linked to a number of the pillars in which the city also determined to move forward through the next number of years, as well as our links with universities, including WLU, who recently released their strategic plan and a number of pillars, and thriving community certainly resonates as one of them, and as well, I believe, University of Waterloo is also about to, is working on their, their strategic plan, which I'm sure will have many alignments, as well as with our group. In 2017, there was an initiative to break up the committee and focus on three certain areas within the community, the first of which was the community cohesion. I will speak to each of these in just a moment as well, the second being student experience, and lastly, the community safety and wellness. Another part of our committee, which I'm sure you've seen in the past, and is our Student Accommodation Ad-Hoc Committee, which has undertaken a couple of reports, one in 2015 and one in 2017, and of course, more recently, the 2018 Large Street Gathering Task Force was created. Looking at the community cohesion, this fundamental here really is the tie-in between the community and the students to really sort of promote and enhance community events, such as the McBarbecue, which happens throughout the years, as well as countless other events, where we try to really bring in, you know, students into the community to get involved with, with various, you know, events and, you know, businesses and through on throughout the community. And you really sort of leverage the neighborhood strategies, you know, and looking at best practices from other cities and other post-secondary institutions to really sort of drive home that engagement, and, you know, sort of with the thought that if we can engage the students now, that there's a better chance that they'll want to continue and stay and live and prosper within Waterloo. Most recently, they've updated, the committee has updated their Terms of Reference with a focus on more tangible actions, and, and also recently felt that the need to bring in some neighborhood representation onto our committee as well, to really sort of get the voice that's being heard. The Student Experience pillar was also known as the talent attraction and retention. I think this is something that, within this committee, has been spoken about far before my time and probably will be continued for a long time. It is a very difficult subject and one that, one gets a lot of attention. We took this on and decided to include some external partners, create more of a working group, including groups like Armitas and Community Tech. And through that, conversations, we partnered with, or had conversations with Lori, who ultimately partnered with Deloitte to conduct a U610 MBA report, which concluded in June of this year, which came up with six bold plays to sort of foster more on the retention side in relation to the tech sector within Waterloo. Bold plays included exposure, compete, play, work, live, and awareness, all with extensive amount of research outlining how each of these components could further enhance the retention of graduate students to stay, live, work, and thrive within Waterloo. Through this, we've also understood or reconnected a lot of community links and, you know, continued to explore those and then foster those relationships. The last pillar was the Community Safety and Wellness Group. They initially took on identifying and understanding what potential risks could be associated with the safety and wellness, both within the community, as well as students specifically. Obviously, there were a large number of issues that were identified, but it was the path was taken that they would look at one issue, which was actually discovered through Town and Gown Association Ontario's conference in 2017, which was a, which was Western University Initiative related to mental health and trying to sort of create a program that would offer services that were beyond just regular school hours, evenings and weekends, and through that, brought in some key stakeholders within Waterloo, and through that conversation, understood that really it was, it was going to be a difficult initiative to take on, and at the end of the day, it just decided that the program was, was not feasible. I think through this exercise, what was clear was, you know, going through the motions doesn't always result in a positive experience. Sometimes, things just don't work out, but it was still getting together and having enough people come together and have that conclusion to understand that they couldn't have a path forward, and sometimes that is okay. Currently, this, this particular group is, is on hiatus. They, they determined, I think, back in 2018, that there was a tuition cut announcement, I think of roughly 10%. There was also the, a new student opt-out with the new government, which made some services optional for students. I think those are some of the reasons why we decided maybe we would take a step back from this particular pillar and put it on hiatus for, for now, but we certainly look to revisit it with some new initiatives in the coming, coming term. Next up was the Student Accommodation Ad-Hoc Committee. Again, I spoke of that, there was two reports. The last one was in fall of 2017. It provides some keys to information on supply and demand for housing within, within the city, as well as looking at a student survey, which looks at a number of different aspects for mental cost, safety, where they're located with postal code identification, their understanding of bylaws and of the laws themselves. And last year, or 2017, I think they decided, or 2018, pardon me, decided that perhaps it was not best to continue to go forward with that. There was a rather large survey that was going out to students. There was a bit of survey fatigue, we decided maybe we should pause, plus the other T was just being implemented, which we really want to sort of take a pause and understand whether or not that would have some impact and where students could live, as, as well as the influence, perhaps, of Conseil College opening up their campus in university and what impact that may have going forward. So, through that conversation and with some, some new sort of conversations and issues that have, first, sorry, issues that have come forward, in September and October of this year, there is some further discussions about providing a report for 2020, which we need to get on pretty quickly if that's going to be the case. Lastly, which we won't spend a lot of time on, because I know what council has seen interim reports on this, is the Large Street Gathering Task Force, which was created in 2018 with an expanded community partnership, further than our Town and Gown Committee, including the Catholic School Board and the Waterloo Regional District School Board, our hospitals, as, as well as a number of other stakeholders. And the mandate, of course, was to assess the growth of the unsanctioned public gatherings. I think we changed the name now to Large Public Gatherings instead of Unsanctioned, understanding the impact of community to make recommendations and then provide some potential So, we've been operating, we will operate for approximately two years, so we're just over a year through this, this process here. As I mentioned before, there was an interim report delivered to you in, in September, with another report sort of expected in the first quarter of 2020, and the understanding is that we'd be providing implementation recommendations to be over the next sort of five years. Any questions?
Any questions from council?
Councillor Henry.
Thank you. Through you, Chair Vasik. Probably more a comment rather than a question. James, thank you for your leadership for the last three years on the, on the committee, and also, thank you for sharing with us the many other activities that your group does other than large public gatherings. So, it's nice to hear and see what else is going on. You two have members of your committee here, so I'd like to ask that they stand up, please, or two, or three. Great. Thank you, and thank you for your, your time. The committee, as, as James has said, is made up of the student leaders from the various universities and Conestoga College, and I can attest, being part of the committee, that they really work hard at what they're, at what they're doing, so I appreciate the time. I'm wondering if you might want to talk a little bit more about the Student Information Night, Student Tenant Information Night? It's not directly out of the committee, but people are working on it, and I think it's important for council to hear that, based on the conversation we had a number of council meetings ago regarding student tenants and the issues. Perhaps one of your teammates would like to talk about it?
Sure, certainly could talk about it. I think Skye might be best to speak to her, she's one of the organizing members of that night, so.
Great, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Skye Knip, and I'm the Associate Vice President of University Fairs at the Laurier Student, sorry, Students Union. And myself, along with WUSA at University of Waterloo and CSI at Conestoga, are collaborating with city members and paralegal firms to create Student Tenant Information Nights. So, November 12th, at 6:30, we are, yes, at 6:30, I believe, we are beginning at the University of Waterloo, at the E7, yes, second-floor event space, and we will have presentations from the Waterloo Region. Sorry, is it, it's 5:30? Okay, yes, thank you, for clarification. And I actually have class, so I'll be joining afterwards, but, yeah, so Laurier and Waterloo will be doing it on November 12th, and then Conestoga on November 14th. And MVP Catherine Fife has also been supporting us through this, and she will be in attendance on the 12th. Anyone is welcome to join from the community as well.
Great, thank you very much.
So, if I could just say one last thing, I think it's also important to recognize the students and their involvement in these committees. I think we want to make sure that we always recognize their involvement. They're a big part of our community, they, they provide a lot of economic development and drivers, and provide a good sense and fabric of who we are, and without them, we wouldn't be able to really go forward, so we really value their input and their, their seat at the table and their voice as well. So, thank you to them.
Yeah, thanks so much. That was a great presentation, and thanks for your comments, Councillor Henry. I was a student at UW from out of town, and I stayed here, so it's a pretty great place to settle in if we can convince more of the students that would be, to take such pride in the community and get involved like you two, that would be such a wonderful thing. Thank you. Okay, up next, Sharon Whittle, a member of the Advisory Committee on Culture. Welcome, Sharon.
It's already there. Okay. Good evening, and thank you, council members, for giving us an opportunity to share what the Advisory Committee on Culture has been working on in the past year and where we hope to focus our attention in 2020. Tonight's presentation is a collaborative effort of the Advisory Committee on Culture, and if it's okay, I'd like to just acknowledge the members of our committee who are here off the bat. So, we have Freya DeWong is here, and, and it's S. Amad in the back, she's our fearless chair, and I think I saw Kaldi as well here, and then I'm Sharon Whittle, I'm presenting on behalf of our committee. So, without further ado, there you go. I'm sure, as you already know, the Advisory Committee on Culture is an important link between council, city staff, and the community at large. Committee members provide a range of perspectives from across the arts and culture sector, and this is generally our composition. So, we seek nominations from a few organizations, and then we have, we recruit members that have an active interest in cultural activities. So, understanding community issues and ensuring that the culture sector is well-represented in the city initiatives is an important role of the committee. To do this, we invite community organizations to participate in our meetings as presenters, and we meet annually with the Culture Advisor Committees from other regional municipalities and provide feedback on projects and strategies that impact the local culture sector. This year, we have participated in a number of discussions, including the Uptown Public Realm Strategy, the Corporate Strategic Plan, the Culture Plan, Public Art Policy, and the Economic, the Economic Development Strategy, to name a few. And these discussions have culminated in our identifying three pillars from the new strategic plan as the focus for our committee activity in 2020. The three pillars that we selected complement the goals that are already outlined in Waterloo's Culture Plan as well. So, through the, the first strategic pillar, equality, inclusion, and a sense of belonging, as well as its guiding principles of effective engagement, the committee recognizes the importance of engaging and celebrating diverse communities. By building relationships with our local Indigenous and ethnocultural communities, the committee can identify or help to identify barriers and challenges that may limit participation of some community members in civic life, and helps to increase awareness of city-run events and opportunities. And this pillar aligns with the Culture Plan's goal number four, which was enhance engagement of community diversity to build stronger, stronger shared sense of belonging. Another strategic pillar, that healthy communities and resilient neighborhoods. It connects with two of the Culture Plan goals, goal one being uncover and build community capacity for creativity, expression, and cultural engagement, and goal three, to enliven streets, neighborhoods, and public green spaces. So, culture is a core dimension of vibrant and sustainable communities. By nurturing community networks, supporting innovative thinking, and contributing to great public spaces, the Advisory Committee on Culture is helping to build great communities. Some of the things, some of the actions that we've taken this year, obviously, assisting with the promotion of the artist roster, assisting with the development and the delivery of the Amplify Culture Summit, which just happened, I think, two weeks ago, and assisting with the acquisition of artistic works as a part of the public art collection. Our third area of focus for 2020 is economic growth and development. We recognize that cities will not attract new business or investment or see job growth if creativity is not a component of their economic and strategic plans. By connecting with local artists and organizations, and by raising awareness of city-led programs and economic opportunities, the committee supports the work of the city's economic community, the city's economic development division, and helps to strengthen our local economy. So, did that advance? There we go. So, I, I just wanted to highlight some of the challenges that the committee had in selecting these targeted and specific pillars to frame our work plan for 2020. Culture permeates all of the building blocks of a vibrant city, and we can find ourselves in literally every facet, every guiding principle, and every pillar. Our concern was that in doing so, we dilute the cultural perspective and thereby diminish the importance of this lens. So, in his book, The Fourth Pillar of Sustainability: Culture's Essential Role in Public Planning, John Hawkes incorporates four interlinked dimensions: environmental responsibility, economic health, social equity, and cultural vitality. He links community vitality and the quality of life to the quality of community's cultural engagement, expression, and celebration, and stresses the need for a cultural perspective in public planning and policy. Through ongoing dialogue, the Advisory Committee on Culture hopes to encourage the adoption of a four-pillar model of sustainability as a part of the council's next strategic planning process. And is there any questions? Sorry, it's really fast, but. Sorry, it's really fast, but.
I think that's me. I'm the committee liaison on culture. So I just wanted to comment on a great presentation, I think, that really sums up well some of the goals and some of the challenges, and to comment on the diversity of membership on the committee, from community members who have an interest in the arts, to artists of all kinds and makers of all kinds, and to the staff liaisons who are, or staff, I don't know what the staff role technically is called, but I'm gonna call them a staff liaison, and who, who facilitates what's going on in the community and, and brings together the different initiatives that are coming with the voices of the people on the committee. I think what's been going on with culture this, this year, with the Amplify Summit, and with Lumen, and with the Mary Allen Studio Tour, and on and on, has been so impressive and exciting. And I frankly love that you've gently put out an ask, without making a recommendation in your presentation, and asked to say that arts and culture needs to be more and needs to be bolder. And so I really appreciate that gentle nudge for a bold action to instill a fourth pillar of, of sustainability. So thank you for that, and thank you all the committee members who came and continue to be such strong voices on the committee.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, we have Dwayne Priestman, the co-chair for the Waterloo Economic Development Advisory Committee. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to, to provide an update to council and staff on behalf of WEDA, which is Advisory Council, not to be confused with WEDC, which are in California today. I've been a committee member for seven years, and I am the co-chair with a colleague of mine, Darren, who's away today. I'm delighted to provide a brief update as to who we are and what we do, what we've done in 2018 and 2019, and where are we going as it relates to the economic, or part of the city plan, and as well as Economic Development Committee Plan. Who we are, and what's our mandate? To advise council and staff on matters relating to economic development programs, to act as a resource on economic development projects and initiatives, and just, and most importantly, to act as a conduit to the business community. Here's a list of our current members, and I'm not gonna go through it and identify individuals, but you can see there's a healthy representation from the education community, the academic community, the home builders, Mike's here from the home builders, Art's here from the Chamber of Commerce, many other folks that are at-large business owners and/or those that work in businesses in the community, both from the high-tech startup, as well as from working with what we call the Fortune 100 Canadian companies. So what have we done? Matters that we've dealt with, reviewed and advised council on in the last two years would be the proposed expenditures for the city's Economic Development Fund, Reserve Fund. Folks might not be aware, there is a stipend of funds allocated to our committee to direct economic development advancement. The city's continued support of the Waterloo Region's Economic Development Corporation. We've supported funding for the formalization of an independent sport hosting office, which I believe was established last year. We provided input on the city's revised zoning bylaw, which I believe was, was it just this spring or last fall? Support for the implementation of a municipal accommodations tax, which became effective July 1, 2019. Support for the continuation of the city's existing Parkland Cash and Lou project. If you want to know a little bit more about that, you'll have to talk to the developers. But it's a good thing for the, for the community, for the city, for the taxpayers. Support for the continuation of the city's Brownfield Tax Incremental Grant Program, which we all know as TIG, for a further five-year period. And just recently, if you scoured the newspapers, you'll see that a couple of developers have taken advantage of that, which is great, because it propels the development inside the core particularly. Input on revised development charges bylaw. Support for the draft Economic Development Strategic Plan. So, where are we going? In working with staff and council on the city's strategic plan, the committee identified three pillars that relate closely to the WEDAC mandate. And it's interesting, two of these three pillars are very similar to Sharon's. So there really is a place for culture and for business, big business or small business. It all kind of blends together to make a great community. And these three pillars that we're gonna focus on going forward would be economic growth and development. Of course, we have to focus on that. That's what our, our DNA is. Infrastructure renewal, and then the equity, inclusion, and sense of belonging, quality of place. And just, I'll briefly outline that. So, you know, what, what can we do in, in our committee work as it relates to growth and development? Be, provide input on the development of the West Side employment lands and other development lands city-owned. This is really important for those in, in the audience. The city has a finite amount of, of land that they own, where they can direct development to the betterment of the community. So it's not just for strip plazas and/or student housing, purpose housing, or things like that. It's to really propel and look forward to the future of what this community might need in terms of employment, land development. Proposed expenditures, I talked earlier a little bit about this reserve fund, so we have some focus and some, some line of sight as to the projects that we would recommend council consider as it relates to those, those investments. Infrastructure renewal. We have worked and have been part of the final input on the revised development charges bylaw, which will be, was it presented to you folks last, recently or soon, right? And then the continued support of the city's Brownfield TIG program, which is the program that, that helps get lands that might not otherwise be developed started a little bit quicker. And then one of the things that we're really excited about is this equity, inclusion, and sense of belonging, the quality of place. And where we believe our, where we fit into this is to leverage the collective network of the committee to drive strategic investment from the community to make investments in the community. And a good example of that would be Wilford Laurier's Making Spaces, Making Space for Music campaign, which is to enhance the arts and culture and expansion of the creative industries in the city. We also believe we have a role as, as community business leaders is to invest, to investigate how to encourage behaviors within the business community to give back to the community, to create a more social impact. Bang. And then, like all of us in this room, we're proud to, to be Waterloo residents, and our job is to continue to help the city council, staff, and residents remind them this is a great place to live, go to school, work, and we're open for business. That's it. Questions?
Thanks, Dwayne. Questions, comments from council? Councilor Vee?
Through you, Chair Vasik. Thank you, Dwayne, for coming today, this evening, and for your dedication and your long-term service on this committee. Councilor Bodley and I both love the 8:00 AM once-a-month meetings. That gets us going for the day.
Many of us have already been at work by then, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So anyway, really important work that this committee's doing, and, and that was a great broad kind of overview that you, that you just presented. So, thank you again, and to anybody else that's here. And our staff liaison worked really hard on this community, this committee as well, to make sure that, I mean, it's great.
Absolutely. Justin does a great job.
So organized, and all this, the materials are out ahead of time, and, and the meetings are very well-run, and you're doing great work, so.
I know it's all Nancy, yeah.
Nancy Gale, yes. Shout-out to Nancy Gale. Thank you. So thanks again, Dwayne, for coming tonight.
My pleasure, thank you.
Okay, up next is Diego Almarez, who is the Chair of the Uptown Vision Committee. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so thanks so much for having all of us here, for having the opportunity to talk to you a little bit of our committees. So I'm the Chair of the Uptown Vision Committee, and I'm also a planner and urban designer by profession. And I would like to start by saying the mandate of the committee that I did not include in the, in the presentation, so I'll just read it. So the Uptown Vision Committee will provide input and advice to council and staff on matters pertaining to issues impacting the economic, social, cultural, environmental, physical, and educational situation in order to strengthen the Uptown core. So basically, anything related to Uptown, or anything that affects Uptown. And the first goal slash objective is to act as a strategic planning advisor on matters related to the Uptown consistent with the council-adopted Uptown vision. And I will come back to that point a little bit later. So, so here's our, our committee membership, and I was, I'm, again, I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna talk about each of us, but I just want to point out that we are a really good group of people, and it's, it's, it's very diverse, it's very intergenerational, and it's a very good reflection of sort of the, the diversity of the city of Waterloo in, within Uptown. And, and that's very important. And a few of, well, many of us do work or live in Uptown, but not, not everyone. There's, there's a few members that live and work outside of Uptown Waterloo, and that's very important to have in Uptown, as Uptown is the center of the city, so it should reflect the city as a whole. So, Uptown Waterloo is changing, it's growing fast, but it's, it's not what it always has been. Obviously, it's, it's no longer a, a shopping and dining just destination only, even though that's still very important. It's, it's, there has been a lot of growth in terms of office development, companies moving in, a lot of residential development coming, coming up, and also that built recently. But it's, it's not only just growth, and it's, it's, there's a few things happening in Uptown. Maybe companies might be leaving Uptown, or, or more people are coming to Uptown that we might not expect. So, so what does that mean for Uptown Waterloo? What is that sort of evolving community? And, and what is that change? So, so we do feel that there's a need for, for seeing Uptown as a complete community, and the Uptown vision should reflect this. So Uptown Waterloo should provide for the needs of, of the residents and visitors of Uptown Waterloo, but also for the needs of the, of residents of the city as a whole, and the region, really, because we are, we are one region. So sometimes we forget that Uptown is also a downtown, and it's a city of, the downtown of the city of Waterloo. So we, we just need to keep that in mind. So, back to the Uptown vision. Right now, there is, the council, the council approved Uptown Vision 2025. It was created in 2011. But, by the way, this took us a few months to figure out. There, there have been a few transitions in the committee. Our staff liaison left, got a new job, and our new staff liaison, Rachel, who has been amazing, so thank you so much for all your hard work, kind of came in and started helping us. So we, we kind of had to, well, this, this gave us an opportunity to sort of pause and redefine the committee, the committee a little bit, and sort of think about what direction we wanted to, to take it, and, and what was, what were the priorities. So, so we realized that our guiding document, which is the Uptown Vision 2025, was a little bit outdated. It was, this version was created in 2011 with a couple revisions after, but it, it goes back many years, and there, there are many things in that document that are still relevant today, but also many things that have already happened, projects that are already, already approved, already have already constructed, like Ion that is running. So we, we realized that we had to start with our Uptown Vision document, and looking at it to update it and bring it to today. So, so that's what we're, that's what we're working on. We, we, we divided our committee into subgroups, looking at all, at the different perspectives or pillars of the document, which are, I didn't have, I didn't put them there, but it's, there are live, work, play, move, and build. So, we're looking at each of those, which have goals and objectives, and also a list of projects. So we're going through all of that, it's kind of a review of everything, to come up with, with an updated Uptown vision. And, and the other very important thing was to bring this document in line with everything else that is happening within the city. So others, other strategic documents, other projects that are happening, and of course the work from other committees as well. So that's a big priority that, that we want to bring in, sort of bringing everything together to Uptown, which is the center of the city again. And yeah, documents such as the strategic plan, the public ground strategy, this transportation master plan that is underway. So kind of taking as much as we can from outside and, and making sure that whatever we are doing and proposing is in line with what the city is already doing. So now, I'll give you a sneak peek of the, of the new Uptown Vision statement that we will be aiming to bring to council for endorsement and approval in the coming year. So the Uptown Vision 2030 is to strive for, strive for a vibrant Uptown that is safe, accessible, and attractive to live, work, and enjoy. Lead Uptown into becoming a world-class city center that showcases what the city of Waterloo has to offer. Build upon the historical character of Waterloo while embracing its sustainable growth as an equitable and culturally rich center for innovation, academic excellence, and entertainment, and enhance the experience of the Uptown public realm so that it prioritizes pedestrian movement within a broader multimodal network that connects Waterloo to the rest of the region and beyond. So that's the new vision statement that will guide the, the vision document. And yes, I said, we'll be, we're working on this, but it will probably take us a few more months, so we'll bring this to council in the, in 2020. So some of our other, or sort of priorities, right now, we are, we are working internally as a committee mostly. We, we, with the help of our city staff liaison, Rachel, she's been inviting people from other, city staff and people from other committees to come and speak to our committee about what's, what's going on with the city, what are other things that are happening. Because we, we felt the need, that we needed to be a little bit more informed and educated more, more deeply with what's happening, in order to be able to, to update, to update the Uptown vision. So yeah, updating the Uptown vision document, we, we really want to collaborate more with other committees, and that's, that's a big priority. So that's something I will be doing more of. And again, some of the things that we, that the committee has been doing for the past few years is commenting on development applications for, that are happening in Uptown, so that's something I will continue to do. And, yeah, that's pretty much it. It was pretty short. Any questions or comments?
Thanks so much. Any questions or comments? Very exciting work. Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Bodley.
So, I want to thank you, Diego, for stepping in as chair. I know it's the first time that you've been on the, on this committee, so to jump in with both feet has been fantastic. So thank you for everything you are doing. But on top of that, there are a number of committee members here, so if I could please get you to stand up, if you're on the Uptown Vision Committee, I just want to say thank you as well for everything. Every, as Diego said, it's a very diverse committee, and we all bring, I've seen lots of perspectives come in, and it makes for a very rich and interesting. and it makes for a very rich and interesting conversation. I look forward to the update that's coming forward, but I also really like the idea of exploring that collaboration with other committees, because as we can see, there's a lot of overlap already where we're looking for how these things fit together. And uptown is the place where these things almost all collide. So I'm really looking forward to that, and I wish you lots of luck in the coming year.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Delegations and presentations from committees before we move on to reports with recommendations. There is a consent motion. I've got none. And then up next would be Amanda Sellings, Chair for Waterloo Park Advisory Committee, and Gordon Gravette. Did I get that?
You did.
Thank you.
You're red like Corvette. You got it.
That's good. Vice Chair of the Waterloo Park Advisory Committee, welcome and thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Vasik and Council. Just wanted to start by saying thank you for giving us an opportunity to come talk to you. So start by introducing the committee. The Waterloo Park Advisory Committee is a group of very enthusiastic people, and the mandate is to develop initiatives to implement the 2009 Master Plan. I can personally say it's a great committee to be part of, and we're happy to be here to share some of the initiatives we've done over the last couple of years. So one of the biggest physical impacts to the park as of late would be the LRT, which is now running through the park as of June. I think this one really works alongside the Central Promenade project that, you know, the city and the committee members were part of. It's so great to see the LRT running beside people that are walking, jogging, and biking through the park. And it's opened up opportunities, not just for people to travel through the park, but to stop and have more accessible opportunities to enter into the park as well.
And on the west side of the park, there will be an exciting play area, which will provide opportunities for families to cool off during the summer months, and that should be starting this coming summer 2020. The play area will include a variety of water features to attract people of all ages. The features and water features will be there, as well as two accessible washroom stalls, additional seating, shade areas, bike parking will all be incorporated into that design. And then another exciting project, which is coming forward in the new year, is the much anticipated Laurel Creek and Silver Lake Rehabilitation. This project will enhance the function of Laurel Creek and Silver Lake by improving the water circulation, incorporating sediment management, improving water quality and fish habitat in both the creek and the lake. The project also includes a reconstruction of recreational areas surrounding Silver Lake, which will serve to improve pedestrian circulation even further, introduce water features and accessibility. Recreational components of this project include a beach area, promenade, a terrace lawn, and a new Silver Lake Plaza. Now, Laurel Creek and Silver Lake Rehabilitation Project will also include a visual enhancement of the park, including the grist mill through a deck extension and a viewing bridge, which will be adjacent to the feature. The work will be completed alongside with an extension of the water and sanitary services to the grist mill within the Caroline Street North right of Way. This will provide the opportunity to install washrooms in the facility, washroom facilities in the building at a later date. Future installation of the washrooms in the grist mill will expand the use of the grist mill, optimizing the city's ability to rent this desirable space out for a variety of activities and functions.
So one of the things that the Waterloo Park Advisory Committee does is actively seek opportunities to make the park more accessible. So one of the big projects that we've been working on for quite a while is the wayfinding strategy. So in 2018, we did form a subcommittee that was dedicated to creating a wayfinding strategy that would allow us to look at opportunities and constraints for signage into the park and make it more accessible. So the subcommittee of the park, we completed a bunch of site visits. We had an inventory of signs. So not just the locations of signs, but the types of signs. And in the park, we've got different tiers of trail systems, which include the regional. So we were trying to look at opportunities to make the park easy for everybody to access. We also consulted with the Grand River Accessibility Advisory Committee and Regional and City Staff. So the report that the subcommittee created was a, provided us with an opportunity to then now start to engage consultants, and the intent would be to have an implementation plan in 2020 and also have a pilot program started next year.
And then we also have the Friends of Waterloo Park, who continue to be instrumental in bringing the awareness of the park through a number of exciting events that are, that cater to both the residents and visitors to the city of Waterloo. Friends of Waterloo Park is a volunteer group that is instrumental in bringing the awareness of the park as being the jewel of the city, and we do have some friends, Paul and some others from the Friends here with us this evening. In addition to raising the awareness of our wonderful natural and cultural asset that we have on the park, the Friends have been working on fundraising projects that do not currently have capital funding in place. And we're, we are working with the Friends to expand the means by which the group can fundraise, and we're also working with the welcoming and encouraging city staff and the council's support in these efforts.
So one of the events that the Friends did this year was the EB Farm Fest, so it brought out over 500 people to the park. And a shout out to the Friends, because they had a ton of activities which require a lot of organization, that included an animal petting area, sticker coloring and temporary tattoos, annual puppet making, string music performances, a visit from the Support Dogs of Humane Society, which you can see up on the screen, red cabbage painting, and Wordsworth Books did a story time. So we just want to thank the Friends, too, for their continued support. They're definitely an asset in bringing awareness to the great park that we have. So this time, I'll just say thank you to all the Waterloo Park Advisory Committee members, not just the ones we have now, but the ones of the past as well. We've got a few members in the audience, the past Chair, Paul Mccone, Shakia, Dave, and Peter, as well as thank you to our staff support, Stuart. It's been excellent working with all of them. And I'm gonna end with a beautiful picture of the park, which is also a subtle hint of the winter that's coming. But on that note, the park is both beautiful and accessible on all times of the year. So thank you again.
Thanks so much, Amanda and Gordon. Comments, questions for the presenters? Councilor Bonagor?
I would just like to thank you both and all of the members of the committee. If you're here, stand up. And Friends of Waterloo Park as well, please, stand up so everyone knows, they can see the people that are working so hard to help make sure that this park remains as fabulous and becomes even more fabulous as time moves forward. It's a moving target when you're talking about Waterloo Park, and I see a lot of hard work and dedication from everyone who's on the committee and from the Friends. So I think the whole city can really be thankful for the fact that you're all putting so much work into keeping this park and making it as great as it can be.
Thanks. Okay, so is there someone who wants to move the report as information? Councilor Bonagor, seconded by Councilor Henry. Sorry, I saw this one first. All in favor? Okay, thanks. That's moved. So next up is Ann Crowe, Chair of the Waterloo Advisory Committee on Active Transportation. Welcome, Ann.
Thank you, and I have Tim Osland, our Vice Chair, with me this evening. So if there's any difficult questions, he can answer them. Okay, how do I go down? Okay, I'd also like to recognize Joan McKinnon, who's in the audience this evening. And I'd especially like to recognize our Councilor Diane Freeman, and our staff Louise Finley, Phil Hewitson, and Sarah Kelly. I think I have to say that the city is truly committed to active transportation, which makes our job as committee members really easy, because we're not trying to fight an uphill battle. We're working all together to the same thing. So the purpose of WECAT is to advise council on existing and proposed modes of transportation for the planning and development of a safe, sustainable, and accessible active transportation system. And so looking at your strategic plan, I just amend the title to Moving Forward Together Actively. And I think we fit within all the guiding principles without really stretching it very much. Certainly equity and inclusion. Active transportation and public transportation are for everybody. Not everybody can or wants to own a car, but everybody can walk or take a wheelchair or ride a bike. So it's for people of all ages and abilities to get around the city in all seasons, and we really need to focus on that. Active transportation and public transport are obviously sustainable, and if we want to reduce our greenhouse gases, we have to get people out of their cars and using other modes of transportation. Active transportation infrastructure is highly cost-effective. You can build a bike lane for far less than you can widen a road. And so if we want to avoid expensive road widening and road extension projects, we need to have more active transportation. I'd expand healthy and safe workplace to say healthy and safe city. And our committee fosters community engagement. We have very engaged members. And it's a forum for the council, staff, and citizens to lead the city to a more sustainable future. And we believe that exceptional active transportation infrastructure will provide citizens with safe and healthy ways to get around the city. So what's Waterloo been doing? One big thing was the pedestrian island at Union Street. This is a crossing for the spur line, which has been a challenge for people. We now have a mid-block crossing, so that you only have to cross one lane of traffic. You can then rest and then cross the next lane safely. So I think this is a big improvement to the spur line. The Waterloo Park Promenade opened last year, but we didn't have a committee night last year, so I want to highlight it. The promenade, with the twinning of the pedestrian section and a separate cycling section, has been, other people around the province are very interested in that. The signage is also interesting, very simple signage that helps people find their way. Even the line down the middle of the cycling track that tells people it's a cycling track, and way, and more wayfinding in the park and on all our trails. Drop Bike Share, the Bike Share project. I took this picture deliberately with the train in the background, because I think that Bike Share and public transportation are highly complementary, and it's really important that we build on that. The completion of King Street to Central, the King Street up to Central Street project, which is working its way up King Street, and I've written this a few times. It's really fun. It's changed the way I actually get home, because I now choose to take King Street instead of actively avoiding King Streets. And the region of Waterloo is responsible, so those brown planters you've seen and the white posts all over the place, it's actually a regional project, but we've been involved in the planning of that. The brown planters, you'll be happy to know, now have reflective tape and some reflective posts in front of them if you're driving up Albert Street in the dark. So they, it actually was designed to do different things, to see which things worked and which not. It's supposed to be maintained in the winter, so that will be an opportunity to look at the best way of doing that. And our committee also is involved in community engagement. We participate with a bike valet at the Jazz Fest, Baskers Carnival, and Lumen. This is really an excellent way. We meet a lot of people who are interested in cycling and walking. We answer questions. They give us input into what they would like to see in the city. And it gives a strong message to people coming to those festivals, that bikes are important and safe bike storage is very important. And we have a bunch of projects. There's the Transportation Master Plan, which we're providing input to. We're really excited by the Farmers Market Trail, which will go from Berengar all the way to the Farmers Market. Hopefully, that is actually gonna, we're actually gonna see construction on that in the next couple of years. There's Bike Share, updates to the cycling map. We consult on all the new developments to make sure that there's pedestrian access through large sites, that there's adequate bike parking, that there's secure bike parking, and ensuring that road upgrades include sidewalks and cycling infrastructure. And when I started on the committee eight years ago, one of the first things we did was to develop a concept of a cycling network, a priority network, which would be held to a higher standard for the city. This was the map that we came up. And oftentimes, you sit on a committee for a few years, and you feel like you're not really doing anything much, and not much progress is happening. I think this is an excellent example of how stuff does actually happen. So this was around 2011. This is the network today. And you can see how the concept of the network has expanded. There's still some dotted lines. There's still some gaps, but the progress that we've made in the last eight years is phenomenal. We also have trail counters, and I personally believe trail counters are incredibly important, because they tell you where people are going, when they're going there. If you make a change, does it increase the number of people that use the trail? So the Waterloo Park Pedestrian Bridge is the most, probably the most heavily used trail counter. In 2018, when there was a lot of construction, there were 416,000 people walking or biking across that bridge. This year, in 10 months, there were 526,000. And in 2018, we got a gold award. We were only the third city in Canada to get a gold cycling-friendly award. And recommendations were made to us, recommendations were made by Share the Road to help us get to the next level, which is Platinum, which is our goal in the next couple of years. So Share the Road has everything under five E's, which is engineering, education, encouragement, enforcement, and evaluation. And they gave us a whole bunch of things that we have to do. This list is kind of scary. When I typed it up, I was like, oh my God. Upgrade cycling infrastructure to increase comfort for all ages and abilities, more accessible bike parking, more winter priority maintenance, removing exceptions to our complete streets. We have a complete streets policy, that every street should be accessible for cars, bikes, wheelchairs, people on foot. Identify and fix gaps in the network and invest in Bike Share, which we're doing. In education, we have Cycling Into the Future, which now reaches about a quarter of grade five students. We're hoping to get it to every grade five student to teach them how to cycle safely and comfortably on the road. It's a phenomenal project. We want to make bike safety more accessible and expand education to motorists and cyclists, so they understand how they interact with one another. Expand cycling education into the high schools and to university students as well. Add education to things like sending out a tax bill or a utility bill. CAA bike safety materials, and educate city employees so that they can be ambassadors. Encourage everyday cycling, expand bike events, consider bike trains where experienced cyclists can help less experienced cyclists feel more comfortable. And then evaluation and planning is a really big piece of it, because if you want to go forward, you have to evaluate what you've done and expand on it. So I created data set identifying the level of traffic stretch on, stress on different routes, so you can find appropriate routes, and conduct a representative residence survey. And that's the end of my presentation, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much. That was a very exciting presentation. Any questions, comments? Councilor Freeman?
That's you, Chair Vasik. Thank you, Ann and Tim, for coming this night. And Joan, thank you for making time to come to the committee night. We have a big committee, but it does a lot of heavy lifting. And I really would like to call out to Louise, because the staff support that we've had, Louise in particular, has really taken a leadership role in Manning and setting up and tearing down all of our bike valet all year, this past year. And it's a huge commitment of time, because those bike valets don't typically happen during a regular working day. So I would like to thank Louise for that work. We have, we have big plans as a committee over the next two years, as we, we will, we will apply for Platinum in two years. Now, whether or not we achieve Platinum, we don't know, but we will. Now, whether or not we achieve Platinum, we don't know, but we will apply for it. Anne pointed out some of the targets and things that we're striving to achieve, but one of the big pieces will be breaking it down and determining who's the best, who's best positioned to do these things. And as a city, we rely very heavily on our partners with the region as ways to achieve some of these Es. And so as a committee, we're going to sit down and kind of figure out where are the best areas for the committee to commit their time to, and we're going to start that process at this month's meeting. We'll probably fall very strongly into the education and evaluation piece as a committee. But you can see, as you pointed out earlier, Councilor Bonagor, the overlap with a lot of committees. So the Uptown Vision, what's going on in Waterloo Park, and how the active transportation plays a really important role in all of that. And I think one of the other pieces is it's really nice to have a committee that consistently, while Peter on the committee helps to consistently remind me that this is not a committee about cycling, this is a committee about how it is that we will get through our community, whether we want to take transit, whether we want to walk, whether we want to ride a bike, whether we use accessibility devices to enter into our transportation commute. And so it's really, the committee works really hard, and I'll take this opportunity to thank everyone, even though not everyone's here. So, thanks again.
Next up is Nick Lawler for the Chair of the Municipal Heritage Committee. Welcome. Oh, gosh, sorry. Yes, we have to move that motion for information. Councilor, great, thank you. Councilor Freeman and Councilor Henry, all in favor. Everyone, your turn, Nick. Thank you.
My name is Nick Lawler. I'm the Chair of the Municipal Heritage Committee. I'm just here to update council on our activities in the last few years because we haven't been here since 2017. So before I start, a movement that the committee has taken under in the last six months has been to re-land acknowledgement at the beginning of our committee meetings. And we had one at the start of the meeting here, so I'm not going to reiterate. But we feel that it's important because it helps to calibrate our discussions. The Heritage Committee talks about older buildings and cultures that have existed in our city in the past, and want to always acknowledge that history didn't start at the arrival of white Europeans in this region. It extends way beyond that. So we want to bring that to the front of our minds when we have these discussions and just talk about it in a very forthful way. Part of land acknowledgement is also making it unique to the situation you're in. So we review a lot of planning reports and heritage impact assessments from professionals that come to the community. And in those reports, they actually acknowledge the moving of the land from the Haldeman Track to other settlers and land development and things like that. So we do also acknowledge that the land we sit on is part of the Haldeman Track, which was promised to the Sikh nations. So I'm not going to read these because these are super boring, but basically, as you all know, under the responsibilities of Ontario Heritage Act, the city has a statutory committee of council, which acts to review heritage properties and acts to add more heritage properties to our designated list and generally consult council on heritage matters. And really, the keys to the heritage of the city really rely around the horseshoe here. The committee provides recommendations, but it's up to you guys to really enact them and balance all the needs of the community, which have obviously varied, very different things. So the committee, of course, I'm the Chair, and we have lots of people in the room today from the committee. So we do a lot of really good, hard work, and we're apparently a very active community, so I'm told, and these guys are great. So we basically concentrate our efforts on evaluating and recommending properties for listing and designation. We had 12 properties in the Mary Allen neighborhood that were identified, I believe, in 2008, sorry, 2018 during a walking tour. And in June 2019, you guys recommended those be added to the municipal heritage register as non-designated properties. I'm going to just show a few photos here of some. And you see at the bottom there, I have some names, and those are kind of prominent people who may have constructed these homes or lived in these homes in the past. And one of the great successes about this was during a Doors Open event in the summer of 2018, the city actually helped homeowners create some actual signs they put on their front lawns that listed the construction date of the home and a prominent person who may have lived there. And what that actually did in the community is really spurred a lot of interest in the heritage of the community, and a lot of these properties that we did add to the list are people who are interested in their home's history and the people who lived there. So it was a really good success for us in 2018. So this is only an example of three or four, but there were many, many properties added to the list. So we dealt with 15 in total over the two years of heritage permits, which, of course, are very complex and difficult and sparks huge amounts of discussion within the committee meetings. In 2014, council actually delegated a lot of approval authority for simple permits that followed some established heritage conservation principles and does not the tie-up council's time. So in over those two years, 11 of the 15 were actually dealt with through that process, so it was only four times brought to council for an actual official approval. And those permits are typically very complex permits or large additions to buildings. But the other 11 were mostly simple permits that people just doing modifications to maybe a residential home didn't require, you know, a month's delay to go through council. So the public isn't very happy with this process because we were able to speed these permits through. There was a cultural heritage landscape study performed during these two years, and we reviewed the consultant reports throughout that time, and we commented as needed to. We also commented as members of the public, as there was a public process. And then there was 27 landscapes that were adopted for future study, which was a very big success, and we'll see where that goes in the coming years with the city. But we were all very excited to have this work done by the consultants and just putting these areas on the forefront of our minds. So there's an example of four, but we're very excited for this process to continue forward to see where it may bring us. It might be new heritage districts, it might just be some new Part IV buildings, but it's all very, very great. So consideration of heritage is part of good urban planning, it's part of the economic pillars of the strategic plan. And so as a part of these larger projects that are happening with redevelopment in the city, we did review three of them in the last two years. Primary one here is the addition to the old post office, which should hopefully go shovels in the ground shortly, which we worked with the architects and the consultants on this one. So, yeah, there's the address there. This one here is actually where the LCBO is on Herb Street. This one's still going through all the planning process, but the home over there, I think is on Dupont Street, is actually on the list. And in this development, that is proposed to be maintained, and then this large building will go out in front, so we've been working with that developer through their process as well. And the last one is, this is right across from the, I think it's the Herb Goodfrenel Home and the old Brick Brewery, and this is King Street South. And so there's been, that building in the photograph is actually Aloisus Bowers' house buried in there somewhere. It's been added with three, five additions, and there's some of it left inside there, but it's not much left. So that'll actually be demolished, and that building will be put in its place. But we're working again with the developer through this process because we have to remove this building from the list for this development to go through. So going back to where I began, so we started to discuss our role after the Truth and Reconciliation Commission was ended. And as I mentioned at the beginning of this talk, history just doesn't begin where Europeans arrived. There's a history of heritage and first peoples of 10,000 years beyond, and they called this land Turtle Island, which we call Canada. And we'd like to acknowledge that history when we're having these discussions about our heritage. And we have developed our own land acknowledgement, and we'll be adopting the one that you guys adopted in the last few weeks, which is great, and we're really excited to be part of the process as that land acknowledgement is modified and as things change. And we were very happy to be involved in that whole process as a part of our role as the Heritage Committee. So I believe that's the end. I'll take any questions.
Thanks, Nick. That was great. I am so thrilled to be part of this committee as well as the council liaison, as a newbie to heritage. I've been completely floored by the technical expertise and excitement that people on this committee have. Yeah, Councilor Vith was on it before me, and obviously confirmation there. It's really impressive. I've learned so much from all of you on the committee. And I have been really excited about this sort of, the celebratory nature of the work that you're doing and the approach that everyone on the committee takes, but then also this real critical aspect of thinking about our history as not just celebratory, but what do we need to reconcile from and what do we want me to learn more about to move forward together in ways that are filled with more understanding, better knowledge, and more compassion for others? And so I've been really excited by that. And I'd just like to say thank you to the committee as well because the motion that we adapted for recommendation about the land acknowledgement a few weeks ago was largely spurred on and supported by the Heritage Committee, and I felt really confident bringing forward that amendment to council. And so I'd just like to thank you for your instrumental work in that particular recommendation as a motion, but then also in your obvious sort of getting ahead of the curve and thinking about what does a land acknowledgement mean or should it mean to the city? So thank you so much.
Thank you.
So can I have someone move the report, please? Councilor Vith? Councilor Bonagor? All in favor? All right, thank you. Next up, Matt Tyson for, he is the Chair of the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Beth Eden, Vice Chair, not able to make it? Nope, okay. And John Coco, member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Oh, John, I know your daughter well. Hello.
She's well-known around the community.
Yeah, yeah. Welcome and thanks for your presentation.
Thank you, Chair Vasek, and to members of council for the opportunity to present tonight. And on Beth's behalf, we send regrets she was actually in a bike accident early, or late at the end of last week, and so was not able to join today. She sends her compliments for tonight. But my name is Matt. I'm the Chair of the committee.
And I'm John. I'm a member of the committee as well. So tonight, we'd like to share some background on the SAC. We'd like to reflect on some of the activities we've completed over the past year and then propose some opportunities and focus on areas for moving forward to support the city. And we'd like to speak to one specific initiative based on the committee report, and let me see if I can get through this, C T T E E 2019-006, A Climate Emergency Declaration.
So as council will be familiar with, the committee was created back in 2017. It was a new committee of council that evolved out of the previous Environmental Advisory Committee. So many of the aspects on the environmental side SAC continues to support, but it also takes a more holistic lens that touches on some of the social and economic aspects of sustainability, and I think tonight also reflecting some of the cultural aspects of sustainability. So I'd love to see the Venn diagram with the overlap between each of the different committees of council, certainly a lot of interdependence and mutual support. So our mandate has a number of objectives, but the two key areas that we focus on as a committee are to provide advice to council on corporate and community sustainability through the implementation of the city's sustainability plan and program, and on a broader lens, provide advice to council on sustainability issues as they emerge. Our committee, like many of the others, is a good mix of community members. It's really exciting to see a broad range of expertise on the committee, folks that have a natural sciences and environmental background in the public sector and in the consulting field, a sustainability background, business background. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention we also have a number of student positions on the committee as well that are representatives from some of our post-secondary education institutions that are studying this field. And of course, a big thank you to Anna Marie Cipriani, who's been a phenomenal support as our staff liaison.
So we do have a number of activities that we undertake, and one focus area has been providing advice to the city on sustainable buildings. Quickly, a few of the actions we've taken have included providing input and a recommendation report on the 2018 green building policy, identifying a grant opportunity for an energy manager position for the city, connecting staff with the Enbridge Savings by Design program for new buildings, and providing input on a sustainability section for the city's buildings, requests for proposals going forward on new buildings and major renovation.
As you'll know from the strategic plan, there's been a lot of conversation lately on the Sustainable Development Goals from the United Nations. And so that was one focus area on the metrics and the measurement aspects of the SDGs as they pertain to a municipality that was of high interest from the committee. So we actually had a number of committee members as part of our metrics and measurement subcommittee that looked through all 140 or so targets and indicators within the SDGs and started doing some mapping exercises with the types of KPIs and indicators that the city of Waterloo is already tracking, and that would conceivably be embedded in the measurement framework behind the next strategic plan. We also looked at the ISO standard, ISO 37120, which is about sustainable cities. It has a very strong overlap with the SDGs, even though the framework itself might be different. Many aspects are consistent. And so looking through those two frameworks to see where there was a lot of overlap and where there were gap areas. And that mapping exercise, we presented to staff earlier this year to help inform, again, some of that ongoing measurement and goal-setting that's embedded within the strategic plan. And the strat plan does speak, and the measurement section, to the SDGs directly, so we hope that work will be valuable to spur some conversation.
So as the SAC, we've also been engaged in providing written and verbal feedback to staff and council on many policy aspects, and this has included things like verbal feedback and formal recommendations on the strategic plan, which others have talked about as well, providing input on the zoning bylaw review, supporting long-term climate action Waterloo Region 80 by 20 target, which the city had adopted unanimously going forward. And we're currently synthesizing our group's input on the new transportation master plan that we'll bring forward to staff and council as either verbal feedback or possibly a formal report.
So looking forward, we'll continue with many of these activities and continue to recommend actions that we think will bring the strategic plan pillars that touch on sustainability, active and sustainable transportation, and many other related theme areas to life. Part of our objective is really to build consistency and direction. We want these to be visionary but linked to real tangible impact as well, and really demonstrating boldness but also grounded in reality. And I think as an advisory committee, we can also help, from an evaluation perspective, ensure that the city follows through with and is successful in the initiatives that it puts forward. So on that note, we did want to transition to one specific initiative that we've been talking through. SAC was approached earlier in September by a number of community members who were interested in having the city of Waterloo declare a climate emergency. This declaration is broadly speaking meant to mobilize action and develop a scaled response, a timely response that's commensurate with the scale of the challenge that we face when it comes to climate change. Around the world, there's been over 1,100 communities or jurisdictions which have declared a climate emergency, including over 460 within Canada. Recently, the region of Waterloo, the city of Kistner, and the township of Woolwich have all locally declared emergencies as well. And as you can imagine, the context from where these are coming from, the specific language and add-ons and motivations vary and are quite adaptable to that local context. So there's no one template and kind of thing to pick on that's universal around the world. Each city and municipality and area that's adopting an emergency seems to do it for their own very bottom-up or grassroots motivations.
So as the SAC, we did want to comment on a couple of common concerns that are raised when people say we're going to declare a climate emergency, or we could probably call them misconceptions. One is that it's not the same thing as declaring sort of a formal state of emergency, which that state of emergency has a very specific meaning and requirements for extraordinary actions. This is not what we're about, or the climate emergency is about. Also, declaring climate emergency may look superficial or even seem like it's been called a virtue signaling, but really what will show that it's a serious declaration is that it's is that it's matched, matched with ongoing action. And that's something that we're, as a committee, committed to providing input to the city on. The SAC would suggest that this declaration will strongly support as well as being supported by directions established within the strategic plan.
So as part of the report, we, we added five recommendations and a number of notes to kind of back up why we brought those recommendations forward that I wanted to, to bring to council today. And I see that there is a notice of emotion that's after this on the agenda. So it sounds like there's a lot already happening behind the scenes and conversations that are underway. But SAC wanted these to be written down and on the record so that council could be advised by it. So the first was that we do believe it's important for the city to declare a climate emergency. Following through that to encourage action to take place, if these aren't just words on paper, we thought that the city should develop a corporate climate action plan and renew a carbon reduction target and increase that target to be consistent with the 80 by 50 community target that council has unanimously supported. As part of that, we do think that the climate action plan should also touch on the idea of a carbon budget, which is a framework to help the city allocate resources and action internally in order to stay within a certain set amount of emissions that would lead towards that target that's been established. One interesting tool that I think again is coming out of the language in the strategic plan on, on embedding a sustainability lens in decision-making across the city is to actually require a portion of the council report template to reflect on whether the action that's being recommended, be that a program, a service, infrastructure, what have you, how that actually impacts climate change. Whether it increases, decreases, or has no change to carbon emissions and other sustainability impacts at the corporate scale and the community scale is a really tangible way of raising the visibility of, of what things are moving forward and how they're likely to shape our, our carbon efforts. And lastly, that this shouldn't just be something that sits at the level of council and senior management, that there's tools, policies and standards for how all departments across the city can embed this into their business operations. So we think those five together bring that statement of a climate emergency to something that's real, tangible and shows a, a long-term and short-term direct commitment to meaningful action.
So I think that's it. And we'd like to thank you again for the opportunity to present this evening. We appreciate that the city has taken seriously many of the recommendations we've made to date. And we look forward to continuing to bring community-based and sustainable perspectives to council and staff's work over the coming year.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Because that motion is coming just in a few minutes, I'm going to kind of ask for a motion to accept the presentation and then have some comments. Is that okay with everyone? So it, yeah, okay. Councillor Bodley is going to move it because he's... What did I say? Accept the presentation? Receive the presentation?
You could receive the information.
Receive the information.
And then you could direct it to staff to look into further some of the points in addition to the motion this evening?
Yes. Okay, great. Yes. So let's do that. Receive as information your presentation, which was excellent. Thank you. Directs the recommendations to staff to look into them further. Councillor Bonagore will talk about the motion, notice of motion in a little bit. And then Councillor Bodley might want to make some comments. So Councillor Bodley is going to move it. Is there a second there? Okay, go ahead, Councillor Bodley. Hear some comments and questions. Do we have to, don't the comments come before the vote?
Sure. What do I know? I'm new too. Sorry, just along the theme of what everybody else is just saying, I really do want to thank the Sustainability Advisory Committee and all the people who couldn't make it here tonight and Anna Marie as well for all the really great work that she does behind the scenes. When, when I joined the committee earlier this year, I, I mentioned and I still continue to mention that the expertise of this committee is overwhelming in, in some ways. We have such excellent people on this committee from all sorts of backgrounds who bring a wealth of knowledge. And I think it would behoove this council, and I know myself on a personal level to, to, to listen to you guys as the experts on these topics. Not just today, but going forward. And I want to acknowledge some of the short-term things that we've talked about just in the last 11 months that, that have happened. The, the suite of metrics that you referenced vis-à-vis the ISO 37120, aligning that with the Sustainable Development Goals, which I know is something we talked about here at council during our strategic planning. That was really important and really hard work. And we, I appreciate at council here, everything that was done in that regard to connect with staff. And I'm really eager to see how that's going to embed itself into our business plans going forward. You referenced the transportation master plan, but also some of the discussions that maybe with all that goes on around the world, it's hard to, hard to remember everything. But the discussion we had around Bill 66, which was a, a huge potential change in legislation from the provincial government earlier this year, that you guys pulled together some comments on really quickly. And we were able to forward to the province and actually be part of getting some change done there was, was really valuable as well too. And I appreciate that. And sort of as was touched on, the, the discussion around the climate emergency, my colleague, Councillor Bonagore, is going to be bringing something forward there. And hopefully, sort of you can see some of the alignment between the, the proposals that, that you've got listed here and, and what has, what has ended up in her discussion. And I would encourage you to come back in a couple of weeks and talk about it further. I'm sure there will be a robust discussion around the council horseshoe around, around that, that motion when we get there. And regardless of what ends up happening with the climate emergency, I know that we're going to continue to need SAC's help on things like carbon budgeting, things like continuing to move forward with, with what we want to do with respect to green buildings, procurement and a whole host of other topics. And I look forward to working on these really, really important challenges with you guys in the coming years. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so all in favor of receiving the information? That's everyone. Thanks so much. Okay, so now we have a staff report, Committee Night Annual Report. Is there a presentation? Just a, no? Okay, so Councillor Veth is moving the recommendations. Is there a second there? Councillor Freeman, any discussion? All in favor? All right, that's approved unanimously. All right, number eight, formal or informal meetings. There are none. Consideration of notice of motion given at previous meetings. There are none. And now to number 10, notice of motion from Councillor Bonagore.
Just through you, Chair Vasik, to the staff. Am I allowed to just have a little preamble before I read the notice of motion? Excellent. Okay. So first of all, I'd like to thank SAC, actually the Sustainable Advisory Committee. So as you may have guessed, there already were discussions. I was already working on a climate emergency declaration motion. But that's when I, in, in discussions, realized that you were also looking into this. So I waited until I could receive your feedback and look at that and factor that into what I was bringing forward as well. So as Councillor Bodley pointed out, you will probably recognize some of the points in here. And that's because we recognize, because we recognize the expertise that you bring to the discussion as well. And we will be discussing this on the 18th. For anyone watching at home, this is sort of a formal heads up that this discussion is coming. And I believe it's a valuable discussion because in the face of climate breakdown, I think our response needs to be about courage and determination, not guilt and helplessness. So this is the reason that I am bringing this notice of motion, which will be considered at the Finance and Strategic Planning Committee meeting on the November 18th. Whereas the Canadian government has committed to limiting global heating to 1.5 degrees as per the COP21 Paris Agreement. And the city of Waterloo has committed to a shared community scope reduction of greenhouse gas emissions to 80% below 2010 levels by the year 2050. Whereas the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change implies that to hit these targets, carbon dioxide emissions need to drop between 50% to 58% below 2010 levels by 2030 and between 94% and 107% by 2050, and then continue to decline, reaching net negative emissions in the second half of the century. Whereas the city of Waterloo has identified climate change as a crisis and committed to enabling bold local actions to address this crisis, adopting environmental sustainability as a guiding principle of the 2019 to 2022 strategic plan and embedding it in the Corporate Climate Adaptation Plan, the Conservation Demand Management Program, the city's green building policy and the city's work with Climate Action Waterloo Region. Whereas the city of Waterloo is a community partner in the region of Waterloo-led process to develop a community climate adaptation plan for Waterloo Region. Whereas the city of Waterloo has made a commitment to develop a suite of metrics using the ISO 37120, 2018 international standard in order to align our efforts with the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. Whereas climate action is an holistic endeavor and must be done alongside indigenous peoples and nations, the original caretakers of this land, and must also address the immediate social impacts of climate breakdown on our most vulnerable populations. Whereas the purpose of a climate emergency declaration is to accelerate sustained and meaningful action and to commit to a scaled and timely response to climate breakdown. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Waterloo declare a climate emergency and formally adopt a corporate emissions target of a minimum 80% reduction in GHG emissions below 2011 levels by 2050. Be it further resolved that council direct staff to investigate options for a corporate climate action plan commensurate with limiting global heating to 1.5 degrees Celsius. And for that plan to include a framework for carbon budgeting and reporting metrics developed in partnership with Climate Action Waterloo Region, as well as appropriate accountability frameworks to embed the strategic plan's guiding principles into all divisions, departments, reports and projects. And for staff to report back to council in 2020 with terms of reference for this plan and a proposed timeline for prompt implementation. Be it further resolved that council direct staff to build the capacity of city employees and volunteers through learning and collaboration, as well as staffing and leadership, to fully understand and robustly address the climate emergency within departments and divisions across the organizations. And be it finally resolved that the city consult and collaborate with the public and relevant groups or organizations in the process of addressing climate breakdown and meeting corporate climate goals.
That is long. Yeah. Thank you, Councillor Bonagore. Stay tuned for November 18th, council consideration of the motion. So we can just power through this last bit before we get to reception. No communications or in correspondence, no regional information and correspondence, no unfinished business? Any new business? Councillor Bonagore between us and the snacks, I mean, Councillor Bodley between us and the snacks.
Great. I really, I really just want to take, I know everybody wants the snacks. And I'm really looking forward to the snacks. I haven't eaten dinner yet, so. But I just wanted to acknowledge the, the Neighborhood Summit that we hosted on Saturday. It was very well attended by members of neighborhood associations across the city who do some of the, some of the really good on-the-ground work that you guys are talking about in, in your committees here tonight as well too. And to bring everybody together from across the city and gather ideas about how we can make this a better place to, to live for everybody is, it was really awesome to see. And I know Councillor Bonagore was there as well too. It was really great to have these discussions with people. And I look forward to how we continue to move that forward as part of the neighborhood strategy.
Councillor Freeman?
I'm through you, Chair Vasik. I wanted to also remind council that we won't be together next Monday because hopefully all of us will be taking some time to remember those that sacrificed for our future as a country and for others to have a future. And I know that my grandfather was in the Second Canadian Infantry that served to take Vimy Ridge in the Battle of Arras in the First World War. And my uncle served in Korea. And, and we have extended family that served in the Second. And I just, I think it's an important day and I encourage everyone to take the day and, and really spend time in our legion halls, get to know the veterans that we still have an opportunity to talk to and to learn their stories.
Definitely. Thank you. Any other new business? Okay, any questions? Motion to snack, motion to adjourn. Councillor Henry and Councillor Veth. Thanks. Do we have to all? Okay. Everyone in favor?